...invocation speaker today. And expected her to be here, that's what she said, but I don't see her here in our audience. So perhaps something came up. Since we're approaching time for the meeting to start and our invocation speaker is absent, would anyone from the public like to volunteer to speak an invocation for the council tonight? Would anyone from city council like to volunteer to speak one? Ultimately?
Let's ask a blessing on the meeting tonight. Father God, we thank you for the opportunity to be here and to be able to participate in the workings of government. We thank you for the privilege of taking the time to be a part of this freedom, to be a part of this process that we have. Father, I ask for each and every person that's here that you would give wisdom to us in speaking on the different topics that are before us tonight. I pray for each and every council member and the mayor that you would give us wisdom in making right decisions that are honoring to you, Father. I pray that you would just be with each and every one of us. We're thankful that for our health and safety of each and every person here and ask that you continue to have, allow us to have that health and safety, Father. We ask that all these things be put in your hands tonight. And we thank you for your blessings upon us in this proceeding. In your shoes name, amen.
Thank you, councilman, for your service. I call order this regular meeting of Perry City Council for September 3rd of 2020. Would all of, everyone with these eyes, join me in saying? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Devin, for our housekeeping man, do we have anyone with us on Zoom?
We do, we have guests on Zoom.
We have, other than me?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll have to, if they raise their hand, let us know so that we can tap and hear what they're saying.
Okay.
The echo bothers me because I'm trying to think and I'm hearing everything echo in my ear, so I'm gonna keep the earpiece out since I don't need it to hear council members here. If Mr. Grass logs on there, would you please let us know? And would you please call the roll?
Denneby, Katrow?
Here.
Craig Elliott?
Here.
Mindy Galbivi?
Here.
Adam Grass?
Christopher Powell?
Here.
Terry Wood?
Here.
Mayor James Hublot?
Here.
All of the Conifer Board except council member Adam Grass.
I find that we have a quorum present to conduct business and we have everybody present in the room, so it won't be necessary to handle everything by roll call tonight. I saw a guest walk in. So we will move to approval of the agenda. Clerk and I have prepared the agenda. To the best of our knowledge, it has all matters of business that need to come before you for your attention tonight, and I submit it to you for your approval or your amendment.
I move that the agenda be adopted as printed.
Scored.
Moved by Katrow, seconded by Wood, that the agenda be adopted as printed. Is there any discussion regarding the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote no.
Ma'am, we just dropped.
I'm sorry?
We just dropped, what we did.
Our Zoom meeting just went live. Okay. If the motion passes, we need to give you a minute to set it back up?
It's trying to connect right now.
Let's make sure that the Wi-Fi is still going. Having any luck?
Not yet.
The order allows us to proceed with meetings on Zoom. Are we required to wait for the Zoom to come back or can council move forward while you're trying to set it back up?
It's not on, I don't hear ya.
It's not coming back, I don't know what's going on.
Well, I'm gonna go forward with the meeting and Devin will keep trying to work on that and see if we can bring people back in. I don't believe that there is a mandate that Zoom has to be working or we have to sit here with our hands full.
How many people were out there, do you know? In the audience?
There was one guest and the others were just using the audio.
Okay.
Oop, I think I'm back. I'm back. I just gotta open up the [inaudible].
I'm not hearing it yet.
Okay, we should be good to go. Test, test, test.
Yep, I can hear.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've just completed approval of the agenda. When our Zoom dropped, we got Zoom back on. And so we will go to the next item on the agenda, which is reading and approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Devin, would you please read the minutes of the regular August 20th council meeting?
I move that we suspend the rule of waiving the reading and approve the minutes from the August 20th, 2020 regular meeting.
Second. Moved by Wood, seconded by Powell, that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the August 20th, 2020 regular council meeting. Do council members have any objection to waiving the rules?
No.
Hearing none, is there any discussion on the minutes and motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote no. Motion carries, nay. That will take us to pre-approved reports and presentations. We have no pre-approved reports or presentations this evening. That takes us to the next section, which is public comment. It is at this time during our meetings and at the end, under any other business may come before council, that we open up the floor for members of the public to address the council on any matter. There is a three-minute time limit per person, per session of public comment. Would our guest from Zoom like to address the council at this time? If they would, raise your hand, please. Would anyone here from the public like to address the council at this time? Seeing no public comment, I will close this session of public comment and we'll move to communications. Devin, do you have any communications for the council tonight?
Not tonight.
All right. We'll now move to mayor and department head reports. Devin, do you have a report for council?
I just wanted to report, I was finally able to look up the placemaking mini-grants to see who actually was awarded and council all got a copy of it. I believe that we were close in the parameters of a lot of municipalities and the thumb area that were, and I will look out for next year and we will try again for this mini-grant. I think the 2,000 grant is a very nice community effort and we'll try again next year, but I thought it'd be informative to kind of see, that's what I was curious of, of who and what they were getting it for, what their projects were. And other than that, I'd like to tell people the most popular question is, is when they're gonna receive their ballot. Ballots are delivered to clerks 45 days prior to reelection, which brings us to September 19th that clerks will receive them. Once we reserve ballots, then we will start processing and getting the absentees out to the people that have requested them. And that's it.
Thank you. Any questions, Greg Ward?
Devin, I had a question from someone the other day that did not vote in the primary. They want to vote in absentee. Do they just have to come up here and apply?
They can do it online, they can come see us, we're Monday through Friday, 8 to 4. They can walk in and get an application. I'm finding that a lot of people didn't realize that they already have requested a November ballot, so we will look through our applications first before issuing a new one to them, because you had a dual application, a lot of people requested in March on the presidential primary, and in the August you were asked again. And so there were several people that decided to not get an absentee ballot for August but did for November. So yes, please send them in. They can call and check before they come in to see if we might already have the, an application on file.
Thank you.
Other questions for the board? Joanna, do you have a report for council tonight?
Um, no report, just information. We had the auditors in today and they finished up today, they're gonna be working from their office. It was a little different this year. We had to photocopy all the documents and send them in the mail, so they've all kept the documents for quite a while. So they came out to the field ward today and they're done, they're not coming back tomorrow, so it went pretty quickly, I think.
Any questions for the treasurer? John, did you have a report for council tonight?
No, I didn't.
Does council have any questions for John tonight, not related to anything other than what's coming up on the agenda? Kyle, did you have a report for council tonight?
Well, I wanted to let you all know that we're looking to upgrade and update our Taser. Current Taser technology that we have is 15 years old. The technology is advanced leaps and bounds compared to what we have currently. We've been very fortunate. This is a very integrated equipment, but it still works. But looking forward to implementing the new Taser hopefully by, before the end of the year, but we'll see how well the company plays with this. We're also looking at an upgrade for our body cams. The program that we signed up for three and a half years ago with Axon allows us to upgrade every couple of years, and so we're doing for an upgrade at no cost, an increase to the city. And I hear good things about the new body cams, so I'm looking forward to upgrading those. Seeing significant increase in officer-initiated activity, so you see a lot more lights in town, probably a lot more traffic stops. As far as call volume goes, we're seeing a slight uptick in that also, but mostly it's a self-initiated activity by the officers. And I'm very pleased to let you know that we had Sergeant Monroe's previous life, he had some significant welding experience, and so he was able to create some racks in the back of our vehicles, custom-made for our equipment, you know, personal equipment that each officer carries, so that we can keep it back there and don't have to transfer in and out. And he did a fabulous job with some racks for ballistic helmets and ballistic vests that just make it a whole lot easier to not have to take in and out of the vehicles on a shift-by-shift basis. So kudos to him, and I appreciate his talent in doing that for us. But other than that, does anyone have any questions for me? All right, thank you.
Okay. And since the treasurer reported on the audit, I don't have any additional things to report on at this time. Do council members have any questions for me outside of the business that's already on the agenda? Seeing none then, we will move to committee reports. Do council members have any committee reports for us tonight? Seeing no committee reports, we will move to presentation and approval of the bill. Council has had the opportunity to review the bills and we seek your permission to pay them.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and that payment be authorized.
Second. Moved by Galbivi, seconded by Katrow, that we approve the bills as presented and that payment be authorized. Is there discussion on the bills? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. That will move us to old business. Our first item of old business is discussion about becoming a Second Amendment sanctuary city. Terry, this is your meeting, so we will recognize you.
Well, I seem to have misplaced my example of the county, okay, on their Second Amendment ordinance. Basically what it does, it just reaffirms the Second Amendment rights, it don't give you any additional powers or anything like that, it's just a statement. I thought it was kind of neat because I'm kind of a Second Amendment guy, so I kind of jumped on it. But Adam wanted to talk a little bit on it too, so I'm gonna ask whether it be waived or kept for another meeting. He was hoping he'd be here tonight.
I just text from him, he was expecting to be late with the possibility of not making it. I texted him back and urged him to come as soon as he could.
He told me he was gonna be late and he thought he'd be here in time, so you got more update than I did.
He just texted shortly before the, so do you want to table this till the end of the agenda?
Well, let's table it till the end of the agenda and then we could talk on it, but if he's not here, then I'd like to hold it over till the next meeting.
You have anything to give us tonight to look at?
No, I can't find it. I had it with my McQueen package that I brought up here and made copies up for the council members and somewhere between there and here, I don't know where it went, I've lost it somewhere. So I will get another copy of that and I've got some other information too, so I'll get that up here.
Okay.
It'll be in your box in the next few days.
Then you want to, you want to leave this no action taken?
Yeah, because they should be able to read this stuff, so let's just keep it no action taken.
Do I have council consent to leave this no action taken? We'll move to discussion and possible amendment of council rules and procedures. Terry?
Well, again, that's, that's a one that me and...
Adam?
Adam, and boy, I'll tell you what, don't get old. So I'd like to table that one again too, because I'd like him to be here too.
Okay. Any objection to leaving this no action taken? None? Okay. We'll move to possible resolution to adopt water and sewer rates. This last Monday, John and I spoke with Leo from Michigan Rural Development regarding the recommendations to get us in compliance with bond covenants. Leo advises us that the biggest issue that we have is there is money held in our water fund sufficient to pay the recurrent water bonds, but we don't have it put away properly. We have to effectively lock it away so that in the next agenda, the council and mayor can't go, oh, well, we can take this out of the water fund and we can just fix the roads or do something else. So he's going to present to us a proposal to effectively lock away some of the money that's sitting in the water fund. He's also gonna present to us some proposed changes to the rates that have an eye towards keeping the water fund going strong. However, as we spoke on Monday, on the day that you guys were to get your council packets, we haven't had an opportunity to put the report in your hands. We expect to have it in your hands for the September 17th meeting. And Leo plans to be here for your September 17th meeting to present the recommendations and answer questions. For that reason, I have consent to leave this no action taken. Are there any objections to that? Seeing none, we will move to new business, possible adoption of yard waste deals.
All right. Well, we made some changes this year with yard waste pickup. You know, as I was going over the budget and looking at the equipment and the condition of it, I felt we had to do something. As far as money being set aside to replace equipment directly, that has not been happening for specific items. So we've talked about it some, I think I talked about it in the budget previously, you know, we made some changes to the ordinance to kind of lighten the load on the aging equipment. So what I'm proposing and I think you have in front of you, I went through, broke everything down based on hours and costs provided by MDOT for motor pool use. It's not necessarily that we have to follow exactly, but if you want to stay on task of something to replace equipment, it's a guideline or a rule of thumb. So this, this is gonna go towards not just the leaf back or the chipper, but the vehicles that pull it and everything like that. So I think what we have on there is $4 per month. I went through all of the equipment log sheets and I think it comes out to 92 cents a week or something.
This was included in the budget that I presented to council and effort to restore our yard waste, really begin by maintaining it so that we don't do fur cuts down the road, and to begin to build up a reserve, be a motor pool fund with a dedicated fund that will go to replace equipment and create opportunity for John to perhaps restore yard waste service back to where it was and avoid future cuts. This is the solution that was in the budget, the council approved, and this is the next step after the ordinance. So if council has questions, I'll open the floor up for deliberations, discussions, questions, motions, whatever council's pleasure is.
Wow, I got something. I think I fell down and hit my head on that meeting that I voted for that because I wouldn't have voted for it, okay? I've since then talked to some old dogs around town as to why they put into the leaf pickup and the trash and stuff like that. And the reason they put that in is old timers that don't have money were piling stuff in their backyards and that's where it was staying. And you get skunk, possums, whatever, you know, mice, rats, whatever you get out there, you know, I don't know. And that's why they've been, they did that and went that way. What we're doing is going backwards, because I got a pile of limbs there that's gonna sit there. Got enough money finally to get four limbs cut down that were over my garage because the tree's been falling down. Now they want me to either haul it out, I can't, I have too much trouble, I can't even cut the limb down. So they're sets. So we're putting the burden on the low-income people of this area, and 60% of the people are low-income or reduced income. So I don't know, I, it wouldn't, you know, you guys, we voted for it, it's in there. Somewhere I fell down and hit my head, I think.
I hope recall if you were here at the meeting, we approved anybody that had...
I think I was, but I don't know. It don't matter, I missed it somewhere anyway.
We could look if it's important for you to know. John, did you have something you wanted to say?
Well, you know, it's commonplace, I have a neighboring city's policy on brush, and it says the following material will not be collected by the DPW: brush cut or trimmed by contractors. Persons hired by the property owners are responsible for removing the waste.
Is that an ordinance, John? I'm sorry, is that an ordinance written down or is that?
Yes.
Okay. No, I was just, I was just curious.
We adopted something very similar because we were, we were chipping mountains of brush. If that's what we're in the business of doing, that, that's fine. And I, I brought it forth and all I'm doing is making recommendations. You guys decide what your public works does.
You know, and I met with John and I told him, I said, I don't know the answer, but I know that we're gonna put a burden on a lot of people, and I know we may be creating a problem that we don't really want to live with. I know Owasso picks up, I don't know what city or village.
This is Owasso's.
That, Owasso? They pick up brush. They certainly do.
Not from contractors.
Oh, I don't know about contractors. It didn't break it down that far, but it did say when they pick up brush, how to do it, and that's what I was reading.
And it's, they tell you exactly, they pick it up once a month, we pick it up four times a month.
I have no problem once a month or delaying or slowing it down, and I have no problem trying to save equipment, you know, I have to pinch every penny so I can relate to what you're talking about. But I can't have it passed on to me and passed on to me and passed on to me because I don't want to have to give up my house and go live in low income or something.
That liquid cost when you pick up, $4 a month?
That's, that's what I'm proposing.
So it's a dollar?
Council can do whatever they want.
$50 a year?
Come on, man. I'm trying to be reasonable with it.
This is what I recommended as a solution to solve the problem going forward. If we don't address this problem, John's equipment's gonna wear out. We all have been through the budget many times and we know that there's now an out-of-go sink somewhere in there that we can just grab and throw into this new equipment. I'm looking for a solution that will solve the problem so that we don't have to continue with these kind of policies and less and less service for picking up yard waste. I think that this is the most economical way we could do it. We've kept the cost very low, as low as we possibly could, and examining this and laying it out over the years.
Shit, huh?
Keeping it down to 92 cents a week, I think is about the best that we're gonna get. You know, I, I hear from people every once in a while, like complaining about the cost that we charge for trash. You know, I talked to the folks up in Owasso because I gave them our policy when they were considering what to do with trash. They made a different decision. They felt obligated to have the city of Owasso open to all kinds of different services so that everybody picks their own service and brings it in. But the folks in Owasso pay considerably more for the trash pickup than we do as a result of that choice.
This calls back, we don't have the money, and this is something I've been, since I've been on the council in 2006, I think it was, you're the expert on history, but we need small and intermediate businesses, we need industrial parks, we need to bring growth in here so you can have money and not put it on the bedroom community of meat. We've got to get something coming in on the city and we gotta grow, it's getting stagnant. I've argued that for 14 years.
It's been, it's been quite remarkable in the, in just in the short time I've been on the planning commission, the amount of new businesses that we have had come forward along, you know, the Lansing border, but also within the city itself, new businesses who are looking specifically to invest in Perry because we have some of the unique aspects. Our closeness to I-69, some of our natural resources for some of our farming interests. So I, I've been very encouraged that particularly in the past year and a half, we have had a lot of interest in bringing businesses to Perry, and that, that is good news for us. That really is good news for us. So I think with this proposal for the yard waste, one of, one of the benefits that we know, because John's crew worked so hard, is that weekly we can put out just about anything, whether it's in bags or for tipping, and they take care of it. And it's a good way to keep the community tidy and it's a good way to keep people encouraging them to take care of their property. But more than that, it's a service that we really need, that everybody needs, and if the equipment is broken, if the equipment is constantly in the repair shop, that brush and those leaves are just gonna pile up and pile up, and eventually that's gonna become a bigger problem for the city. So, you know, as someone who's just a single income household, I feel that, you know, that having to pay more money, but the service that we get for that 92 cents a week, I think in assisting the, the homeowners and the community to make us an easier job to take care of those things, I think is a really good investment.
See, and the interest is a good thing, but we need the businesses in here and we need small and intermediate, we need industrial, we need, you know, all these other cities around us are growing, but we just haven't grown. We're at, what, 2,200 population, I think, last I knew still?
Well, we rezoned a property up there to industrial, light industrial, and there, and a new food processing plant is coming in there across the road, new restaurants, two new restaurants are slated to go there, a new agricultural industrial business is going in over near Williams Street.
And when those come in?
Yeah, so...
Great, then maybe it'll take the burden off of John, which would take it off the bedroom community of meat and the rest of us poor people.
I think on industrial, though, Terry...
I think on industrial though, Terry, we don't have the ability to like tell industry to come in here or people to sell their land to industrial. We don't have a vast amount of fast tracks of land that is inside the city that are.
We're almost landlocked.
Exactly.
We just, we don't have the facilities to support it.
Industrial parks up and we can't move out very much. But we need to do something to bring taxes in here so that we can take burden off them, which would take burden off the people living here. Or you'll find your seniors leaving. I'll be one of them. I mean, I can't continue, I'm making out only four dollars, but I've been retired a long time. I'm pinching. Look at my truck if you don't believe me.
Well, you've shown me your pile of branches out there, Terry.
They'll be there.
I'm looking for a solution to get rid of that problem.
Well, he told me I could take it DPW, but I can't cut them. I paid to get my yard done. I can't haul that stuff out.
Honestly, I wish you and I had talked beforehand and you would have had your contractor all the time.
I cost money. He dropped in dirty. The, it's the only way I could, I was getting twelve and fourteen hundred dollar quotes. This guy come in and said, you're on fixed income, aren't you? And I said, yes. He says, I'll drop them then for three hundred dollars. I jumped on it.
He should have asked him if that included calling it away.
No, it don't. He told me it did.
DPW accepts that kind of brush.
The minute he starts, the minute he starts grinding and tipping that, there goes the money. He's got to take care of his equipment like we do. Yeah, and that's why I had him dropping dirty it because I could afford it. This tree, in fact, one of the great big limbs down against the house next to me. We've had one whole tree come down, just missed my house by about six feet. We've had two big branches. It's like a multiple tree type thing. Two of them have come down. Now we've had another one come down next to the house next to me. And I had to get them off them over top of my garage or I'm going to end up losing my garage and my shed, I should say, because you can't park a car in there. But they put it down as a garage. Yeah. I'm sorry, it's not.
So you've been, you've been out talking to the constituents in the public and is your overall consensus that they still want this service?
The, well, I didn't ask them that, okay? What I asked them is why they come in? And they said because they were seeing a problem where people didn't have money to get rid of it. So they were piling in the backyards and you were getting brush piles and whatever else. It's a cleaning, beautification type thing service.
The research that I did at the time when I was rating and our office was helping John go to other municipalities. We're one of the few that gives a service group. It's, I mean, and we researched, gosh, would you say at least ten, if not more, other municipalities?
I've got.
And so, hold on, John, just a second. And so when we, when we averaged it out, they're saying about the same thing that he reported as the city of Owasso, that when it comes to a contracted situation, you know, that, that they just can't hold that burden. Some of them are actually charging you to do it for you. You bring it up to DPW and they'll charge it per hour. But again, the philosophy I've always been taught in a municipality is that we have to treat everybody fairly. So if you want something like that done, then there, again, there has to be a charge for that one person to have that service. You can't do that. So John put it upon himself because this community likes it. I jumped the gun a little bit. The research I found through council minutes was, one of the reasons this was, was proposed is that there was a lot of how they were getting rid of it. Their leaves were getting burnt. Their trees were getting burnt. In this city, the residents are too close to have that kind of burning in the city. And their fear was that this service may, what, what happens when you can't afford it and not go away? So my point of that is let's go back to budget. Every year with budget, the discussions that go into it. What is our priority that we are trying to help? We are trying to get our water and sewer infrastructure better, improved. It's outdated and we're looking at that. So motor pool is never a big discussion. It's never put in there. And again, this is a proposal that is economically reasonable. I understand what you're saying on a budget. But is, if you have industry and business coming in, it's going to go to infrastructure of the water and sewer. It's, then that's millions, thousands, hundreds of thousands and millions of dollars. And that's where our budget is going to target. So this wasn't independent. It was highly researched by municipalities all around us. I mean, anywhere from, you know, twenty miles to probably two hours away of status. Of municipalities that were comparable to the same thing we did. So I do understand that, but I do question, even if we get the tax revenues in, they're going to be about building and growing, which is our water and sewer. That's our attraction for this, for business to come in. And John, sorry, I didn't interrupt you, but I just wanted to make a couple of points of the research that we've done.
All right, Asher. Clarification. So the options are, we first off, put some sort of this extra charge on everyone in order to be able to improve the equipment and keep it running. The second option is continue to diminish the service to allow the equipment to keep going, which would therefore go against what Terry is hoping for in the first place. And third option is that we break down the equipment and we do not have any of the services. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, if we run it to exhaustion, this is what's happening. Water and sewer and the highway funds are the only ones contributing to motor pool. General fund, which this is, seems to me a general fund activity, has been zero. For, I researched back, I couldn't find when general fund contributed to motor pool other than through the police department. So, you know, would it be as big, you know, you know, would it be four dollars? Would it be, you know, if you put just a shaving in over the course of time, so when you get stuff out, we got the vac, the leaf vac is twenty years old. I don't see how I can drag that thing up and down the street eight months out of the year at twenty years old. The truck pulling it is twenty-two years old. Eventually, and that, that same truck has to plow snow. So this is this, I don't want to get in the situation where I'm out with pickup trucks trying to plow all these streets.
So eventually. Because if we don't do something, we're going to be wearing out of the equipment. But someday it's all going to break down and a city council and a mayor are going to sit here and be forced to come up with tens of thousands of dollars we don't know where in order to replace this equipment or to say, don't have that service anymore. Sorry.
I mean, it's not here, and I'm not sitting up here saying I want to just beat down the residents of city. But if we want to keep the services going, we have to do something and this is an idea. Sure, I came up with it. So that's.
But it's a way to support motor pool and have those ones directly go there instead of robbing Peter to pay Paul or something else. Yeah.
The, the equipment goes to routine maintenance, right?
Yes.
And, and what are you finding in your maintenance that, that something's getting worse and worse?
The leaf vac is burning oil. It burns, you know, in a day run, it probably burns a quart of oil.
Okay.
You know, it's, I think it's got four thousand, forty-five hundred dollars on it. So, you know, the vehicles, I mean, it's not that we're running high speeds or anything, but you know, they're idling. The, the truck's idling and the vac's running wide open and sucking up leaves, you know. So over the course of time, everything is just, I, I want to do something before I have to come to you guys and say, we got, we got to spend ten thousand dollars for a new engine in the middle of November and the streets are piled full. That, that's where I'm at.
Us has been seeing our, our property values, home values in Perry going up, particularly since I moved here in two thousand and eight. And houses now in Perry are getting snapped up very quickly. I think one of those is because when you drive through our town, it's generally, the yards look nice, everything looks tidy, people do a really good job of keeping their homes up. And that's very appealing to bringing in new families and, and new people in the areas. Having that service available, that makes it that much easier to make your home have curb appeal.
And I've never been one to take a problem. You know, anytime you ask for more money, that's always a harder thing to do. Never makes people happy. But I've never wanted to be one who stuck his head in the sand and go, well, I'll be out of office by the time everything breaks down. Let it be Sue's problem. I, I don't want to do that. And so John and I have gone over this for many years and we've been searching for a solution. This is the one that John found. We're helping the, that I think is a reasonable route to go. Because the longer I put my head in the sand and push things on, the bigger the cost is going to be at the end and somebody has to fix that.
If, if, if you forced me, and this is something, if you forced me to say, okay, when I take that down or have it cut down or whatever, I got to get it out, pay the contract, get it out, that's going to force me to leave it up there. And that's going to force me somewhere down the road. I'm going to have a smashed garage. And of course then, just a mess. That's all I'm trying to do is protect what I got.
Well, this I think is the least expensive solution we're going to find for you to try to eliminate the problem.
Yeah, so if you look at the difference that your contractor gave you three hundred dollars and the other ones were in the thousands of dollars at fifty-two dollars a year, that's, yeah, would take a lot, a lot of years to add up to make that difference, to not have that available.
Well, part of the problem I was a long time, been retired a long time. You know, I, I wish I had that paper. I once did this a few years back. What I retired with, buying power, of course, I went through some things that most people don't go through. But even then, if you look at the buying power of what I made and what has gone up on me, my buying power is going backwards quicker than quick. I mean, it's, there's no question. And that's not nobody's fault, but life I had after I retired.
So this is not eliminating the, the rules and ordinance that we put in place.
No.
This is just equipment, an equipment situation. It's not changing anything. We, we have the same rules in place now that seventy, eighty, ninety percent of the people around us do. You know, I can't break everything down individually, what they pay for trash recycling and yard waste because they, they combine it in a monthly bill. It's a monthly fee. Anywhere from fifteen dollars to nine fifty. And all of them are more than what we are with trash. So yeah, at four dollars in, it still brings us to twelve fifty, I think. We're still in the middle of where everything's at. You know, that's the best I can do. You guys don't have to do it or you can do it. I, I don't.
We're just in a tough spot. I don't care what you look at. We're just in the middle of it. But the people that are having to pay that are in the lower income bracket because, and we don't have enough income. We need, we need small intermediate businesses and industrial parks.
Those people usually aren't the ones producing any of this bro.
Their tax, their tax money's going to go for other things. I mean, the water gets a hookup and they pay their monthly fees. The only thing we might have to do is put a pipe down the road or something if there wasn't one there.
We don't want those water fees to be going into motor pool though. And one of the benefits of this is that we're keeping the books cleaner, meaning this money is specific for motor pool and that's what it's going to be spent on instead of diverting it from other places. And that's one of the appeals to me about it.
If I may? I've been really, in the last three years, I had a hard time coming up with asking the city or asking the residents to pony up more money for our parks because our parks are terrible. And then after this COVID, that's what I wanted to do, my, as my last hurrah when I, when we walk out. I wanted something to go towards the park. But the people that lost their jobs, you know, God bless, and I just can't go and say, hey, let's buy a swing set. That, a regular swing set is fifty thousand dollars. And so I just, I mean, I absolutely did the money part of it and, and the maintenance part of it. And I know it's really difficult, but I think this is something that really has to be debunked. The neighbors behind me, the first day it came out about bagging, I was under attack. And you know, I got a tape and he's like ninety. But it was his whole life living here in Perry. He's never had to do this. And so then he refused to bag it and he just mows it and blows everything into the alley. Not the end of the world, but he's not the only one that I've spoke to that is, you know, the, the brush pickup and stuff. I haven't really heard anybody say much about it except they missed mine yesterday. But the, the bagging of, of the grass flippings and the yard waste. That is, that's what I'm getting feedback from is, and these are people that have lived, I've been here thirty. And these people have been here, you know, born and raised in Perry. And they're just kind of outraged.
But they're paying nothing. But I mean, compared to what other people in other communities are paying, they don't have a reason to be outraged. They're paying less than what everyone else is paying and they're getting really good service. Is it just that they've gotten used to being spoiled? I mean, that's kind of what it feels like.
Pissy way to say it, I think, you know?
Yeah, it is a pissy way. And I didn't mean it that to that resident. I mean, like, like, we really get a lot from what we have now and what other communities are paying, they're paying a lot more and getting less. And it really disheartens me to hear people complaining that they're getting something that other people aren't getting for less and they're still upset about that. That's, that's frustrating.
The people that were born and raised here, they, they've come to expect what they've been getting forever.
I'm sure they have.
And I don't see, you know, I, I see the dilemma.
Yeah.
But I don't see why it's so hard to understand that equipment has a lot of wear and tear. And it's going to wear out. We have to take some measures to keep it maintained so that we can handle services.
There should be a budget so much to decide every year.
Yeah, unfortunately that budget gets cut in a lot of different pie pieces and the more, the longer we go, the more, it's, it's life. So something has to give. I mean, you look at it right now, our infrastructure in the United States. Back in the nineteen fifties during the Eisenhower administration, they put tons of money out there and filled all these roads. And since then, nothing's been done to them. And now throughout the entire United States, the, our system of roads is falling apart because no one has invested that money in. But if you look at our budget, everybody wants it to go to everything else. And so there's choices and politicians make choices and they have to decide on things and.
I mean, the DPW, they need lawn mowers. They need the tasers and, and they, both are absolute necessities.
Yeah.
So some have to be a little bit more creative. Just, you know, some of our, the land that the city owns, if we can't sell, maybe we can, you know, the agriculture part, have somebody pay what the property taxes would be for that and let them, you know, grow corn, grow soybean or whatever. Something to wear. So we don't have to eliminate services. I mean, for, if in a perfect world, we'd love to be able to increase the service for everybody.
But it's not a perfect world.
Pretty damn good.
I did it. The two guys at CFPG have been through several budget cycles. And you know how much. And you know how much we cut every year. Cut, 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 cut. And so, yeah. We're looking for a practical solution, without creating too huge of a burden, to allow us to begin an incremental step to resolve the problem in the long term. To build up a reserve, so that we can place that equipment, prepare that equipment when we need it, but ideally, get new equipment for the PPW, so that they can keep the service at the level that they have. And I'm looking for a solution. This is our proposed solution. If you have another solution, Kerry, I want to come up with this money, we would, I'm sure all of this is considered. But we can, you know, we can be unhappy if we want. I never like asking people for money. But I've got a problem in front of the city. And if I don't take action to try to solve, this council doesn't take action to try to solve it, then at some point, it's gonna hit us all a lot harder and be a lot more expensive, and sewer the next council will have to solve it.
Do you have any idea, just with your experience, Devin, how much longer the equipment would run?
Well, the chipper is about 10 years old, so that, you know, but the leaf vac, you know, we could start it up and run an hour, and then put a rod through the side of the block. I cannot guarantee anything. I mean, even new stuff breaks down.
Exactly.
I'm not saying that, you know, life is gonna be perfect with new stuff, but the leaf vac that we have, I had to send parts back to West Virginia three times to get the right stuff when I ordered the new drum, because Giant Vac is not really a company anymore. It's been bought by someone else and rebranded, and it's just becoming antiquated. We've got a 20-year-old sewer vector truck that they don't make anymore. You know, so I have to, this is a complete thing. I have to start separating this stuff out, because water, the bottom line, water and sewer can't fund everything. That's what I'm getting at. We can't keep going down that road, just mining it out of them.
And not have the money to fix the water and the sewer.
Right, you have to have some equipment and keep some money in those funds, and that starts putting the strain on everything.
And we have to start making a little more effort, like bagging the grass and that sort of thing. Yeah, it's more work. My husband's disabled, he'll tell you, just like you guys.
It hurts.
Yes, it does. But that's what we have to do to keep our equipment going. We have to make some sacrifices.
Molt your, put your, put your clippings right back on your grass, and let it molt your grass, and then it'll help compost and make your grass healthier.
Yes, that's true.
Choice, instead of bagging it.
You don't even molt your yard.
No, I don't.
No, I do that.
But my next-door neighbor molts his own grass.
Good guy.
He is a good guy.
A good guy. It's my son-in-law.
We might keep going, folks.
So what's council's pleasure? Devin, how many votes are needed to decide this? Is it the majority vote, or is it a four-vote now?
Well, anything with cash, which we do have a cash amount on here, would be four-vote.
Okay. So it takes four votes to decide this. We've deliberated extensively. What direction do we want to go? I'm curious what council would grasp.
I'd like to wait until Adam is here and have his input. I value his input.
So what, today we're just seeing your $4 for the trash increase? The fee?
Yeah, for the yard waste, the brush, and that's what it would go to.
And so $4 a month?
A month. It's like, when I divided it out, 52 weeks, it was like 92, 93 cents a week.
Jerry, I understand what you're saying about better community and the lack of money flow, but I don't want to, I don't want to get rid of all our, any equipment. I still want to see if some way we can keep up the vacuum, but...
You talking all year long? From March?
Like when we get grass clippings like last year?
No number?
As long as it could go, yeah.
No bags? You don't want bags? That's what you're...
That's basically it.
Then, well, we'd have to come back, and council would have to change the ordinance and policy on that.
But as far as the adoption of the yard waste fees, I'm all, I'm for that. I mean, because it's not getting cheaper, and I understand that. It's not getting cheaper to run the equipment. But I just, I do also, would like to hear from Adam. So if, I'd like to see if we can table this.
So council can make a motion on this, or you can leave it, no action taken, which will carry it to the next meeting. And if Adam shows up tonight, which we said was a possibility, if at that time I have council's consent, we can take this back up, or we can choose not to, and just say, no, we said, no, do this. But, you know, it's up to council on what you guys want to do. And as Terry saw last week, once there's a motion and a second, we go forward in the vote. So council decides what you want to do, and...
I just think what I'm saying about the equipment and the vacuum and everything, and the yard waste fees are two separate things.
Yeah, we're, tonight it's just about the fee.
The fee, and when, our next meeting, when hopefully Adam will be here, we'll, we can possibly go back and discuss. Because an ordinance can be changed.
Council, it's gonna be changed.
We can do that, but I see, I, I'd like to, that we vote on the yard waste increase, the fee.
Do you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
First item under the new business on your motion, she.
What is the bottom one? Okay. Resolution, okay. I move that we accept and adopt the following resolution. Whereas the Perry City Council has adopted ordinance. Is that the fee? I'm sorry, I didn't stop. That's not the fee.
It's the number of the ordinance that was originally adopted. It's a formality of acknowledging the original ordinance that was passed for trash.
Okay. So do I skip the part, whether the Perry City Council would go down to, whereas the ordinance provides that the, that the city council shall establish the rate and fees for every owner, occupant, or person in possession of a premises, yard waste to be removed and disposed of, and the allocation is of such fee, and therefore, effective October 1, 2020, the city of Perry shall bill the amount of $4 per month, per owner of record of each premises, as reflected in the records of the city assessor.
Second.
Motion by Powell, seconded by Elliott. Perry City Council, that we accept and adopt the following resolution. Whereas the Perry City Council has adopted ordinance 293B, commonly known as the Perry City Code Section 1082 Refugees and Trash. And whereas said ordinance provides that the city council shall establish and rate the rates and fees for every owner, occupant, or person in possession of a premises, yard waste to be moved and disposed of, and the allocation of such fees, and therefore, effective October 1, 2020, the city of Perry shall bill the amount of $4 per month, per owner of record for each premises, as reflected in the records of the city assessor. Have I accurately summarized your motion?
Yep.
Have I accurately summarized your second?
Yes.
Very good. Then, is there any further discussion? Do I need to call a roll call for this one?
It says roll call.
We're set up for that, in case anybody participates by Zoom.
Okay.
Since everybody's here live, we only have to do a roll call if somebody wants to vote no. But we'll go through the voice voting, see. All in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote no.
No.
Roll call is required. Mayor Proton Katra.
Yes.
Councilwoman Miguel.
Yes.
Councilwoman Powell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Elliott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wood.
No.
The motion passes by a vote of four to one. I think Councilwoman Elliott is asking for a brief recess.
Mayor, do you want to know if Elliott gets back, or if we move on? Can I explain a little bit about the next ordinance, or the next resolution that's in front of them?
You want to report on that?
Yes, Jerry, what do you need? I'll get it.
I'm gonna get a water, I get it.
I don't ask very often.
That's your one offer tonight, right?
That's it, that's all I have.
You're not even gonna be there by the time he gets back to a C. Bad wheels, but...
It's more, frickin' more.
They all have their dumpster out back.
Every once in a while, I see tickets slightly brown, yellow, creamish colors.
Does our services?
It's been proving...
Collect their trash?
Most people have paid for commercial services in the yard waste, so they can opt out for businesses.
Especially in the Latin.
Because they built these four businesses.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Really? What about old businesses?
It means it spends a lot more time...
Yeah, because they use a technical...
Home businesses that can't opt out.
And put hoses on where I can get the public access.
I think we've got, we've got six bags.
I mean, it's, I gotta...
Was that a limit, or was that a...
It's just a strict system, but it keeps it...
You know, I have a bad problem with it. I've had people told me to propose one of these levels, and actually, they picked up.
Oh.
They got a big A, picked up, and took my shit. I'm always wondering with my neighbors, because most of them have six bags up in the market. A lot of people, we all, if I don't have six bags...
Absolutely, yeah. Because like, I got a guy who comes home, and he has his in the shop in his house. And he will have his problem covered, whatever it is. We've lit up, and I mean, it's heated. And he has two more green trash cans. Up to 12 bags of regular trash bags. And I just thought, you know, is that fair to the breaking order stores of town?
Well, I... I never... I haven't asked if the breaking order stores of town can't opt into, opt into our trash. Most of them have their dumpster behind them, so they can opt out. And on the yard waste, they may opt out, too. You might ask Devin that question, she might know, because she...
I don't want to bring it up tonight, I just, it was just a...
Yeah, we chat, and ask the question. If she doesn't have the answer, I'm sure she'll get it for you.
All right.
Is council ready to come on recess?
Well, that was recess.
Recess.
Where's monkey bars?
All right, so we're out of recess, is our Zoom back up?
Everybody's here, everybody's on, we're ready to go.
Okay, so then we are moving on to possible amendment to yard waste rules and regulations. So Devin, you had a report on this?
Yes, I just think it's important to, whether you decide to make this a motion or not tonight, or wait for Councilwoman Grass. The possible amendment of the yard waste rules, all council received that information. And if you will note, I thought it was important to let you know that it's amended from the time it was done, from January, when the implementation was put in on the bagging of your grass clippings, and so on, and so on. So none of that, of the rules and regulations has changed in the example that I gave in front of you. What has changed into it is the rules and regulations are including the original rules from January. It's including, if you had approved the resolution and the dollar amount, it's including the effective date, because we had to coordinate with Dory, our utility clerk, what date we could meet, also because the ordinance had to be 30 days before it was effective. And then, so those are included on your decisions, possibly. And then also, the other part of it is that, if you'll note, if you've noticed, is there was number seven that was added to the rules and regulations, is non-residential property owners use in it and opt in or opt out. The trash is set up very similar. So this yard waste is, if you go through the history of it, kind of mirrors what the yard waste was set up. Central business, commercial business, mixed use, and industrial is what's placed in there. And in the majority of them, some of them don't have yards, or they're already paying the service to have all of that done. They don't use the city's service at all. And again, we have the same process with our trash, because a lot of our commercial businesses, industrial, they have dumpsters. So they have the same option in the trash service, is that they can opt out, but they have to prove that they have a trash, a dumpster service. All residents still have to have the trash service, and that's what this is implemented to. So I just, I'm hearing Mr. Powell talk, and wanting to consider looking at the rules and regulations again. And so this might be more complicated, and it might be, need to be put more to a committee before that part might be passed then, if that's what you're looking at. But the rules that were set in January have not changed in what's presented to you. The biggest thing is adding on what you might consider doing tonight, and giving your commercial, industrial, mixed use, that option to opt in, opt out with a form.
So this motion amends the rule, so that the commercial businesses can opt out of the yard waste.
Correct.
And without this motion, then they don't have that opportunity.
Correct. If we stay with the resolution that they passed above, which states that this is effective October 1st, yes.
And I think I heard you answer the question that Councilwoman Powell asked me, which was, could our commercial businesses opt into the trash service? And I heard you say, yes, they can actually opt in if that's sufficient.
Yes, we gave them two options this time. The trash was an opt-out. They would get it automatically, they have to opt out. But with, after the research I did, all over the place, this was the best scenario I could find that would fit with our community, is offering the commercial to opt in or opt out.
My question was about, yeah, a home business. People that work out of their house, and they bring out their trash in it. It all depends on what type of home business they're running, but I've seen three extra garbage cans and 10 extra... I've seen three extra garbage cans and 10 extra bags, including the brown caddy that we have. It's not that big of a deal and it doesn't affect me. I'm just thinking, you know, the guys that are, that run a business, but they run it in a brick and mortar uptown, they're gonna pay a lot more for their service than what we are at, at, at our, at our residence. And so this guy's getting, they're getting, I don't know how to, they're, they're bucking the system. I just think that if it's a home business, that they should have to, you know, pay up a little bit more than everybody else that has the regular home waste that they put in the garbage, but the boxes and, and, and paper and everything else from a home business. I, I think that should be different than.
Your, your zoning ordinance allows a residential to have a home business.
Yeah, and that's.
If you have somebody in there, and Granger is usually pretty good, so if somebody's abusing it, we will get informed or their items will be left because, you know, it's supposed to be in the container. Now, if they have an extreme amount, yes, even a resident, if they feel that their family is big enough that they have extra trash, you can get option two. You can request that and be billed double the, the 850 times two and get that on there. Um, do, do I have any regulations to force that resident to do that? No.
No.
No, but, but you have a zoning that allows that, so I, you know, they, they're not given what you're talking about, that opt out form.
Right.
As, as other commercial in our city. Cause we, we, we define it with our, cause a lot of the home businesses don't report that they're even a business to us. So, you know, do you want to put that manpower in there?
For how speed we pay to Granger. And if Granger doesn't pick their trash up, well, then they'll have to find another way to get rid of it. And if Granger picks their trash up, it's not as if Granger is going, oh, charge the city of Perry an extra 850.
Yeah, I spoke with one of the drivers and he was saying that, you know, if I don't pick it up, they'll send me out tonight with the truck to pick it up. And so.
Yeah, we set the fees to recover our costs, so we don't have an extra cost on those situations because the city's not incurring an extra cost for that trash to be thrown away. And it's a good little practice out of Granger in that as long as not too much of that's going on, they tend to just pick it up and take care of it. And since the whole purpose of our fee is to recoup costs, we never have a reason to get into it because we're recouping our costs, okay?
Devon? Um, if someone has an excessive amount like once in a while, can they call Granger and make, have them like pay extra that week or something to have them pick up extra crap?
Granger is very lenient if you're just moving in, if it's a moving situation. And you can always pay for bulk items, extra items. I would think trash bags would be the same thing if something would come up. But all you have to do is call our office and then, um, there is a price. And then what we've been doing for large items, and this is just trash, is it's been waited until Granger's picked it up and then build a utility account instead of taking people's money. Because we find what's not your treasure is somebody else's. And so we kept charging people and then the item would be gone before Granger got it. So, I mean, that's not exactly what you asked, you were just asking the excess of trash. But yes, Granger will, um, you know, we have a, we have a system of that, of, of large items or bigger items.
If you come on over to my neighbor, Craig, and I think most of the neighbors around us do this. I, yeah, many times with my neighbor, had an agreement when somebody's had extra bags of trash that we just share space. I frequently allow neighbors who have a few extra bags of trash to pile on my side and they allow me to do that. So I think most of the neighbors deal with those things, basically enough. Cause I don't usually use my old six bag, I don't usually fill my bin all the way. So if my neighbor wants to toss an extra bag into that, where I put it out, he knows, I think they all know, except maybe Bridges who's never talked to me about it, never asked. I think they all know that they can throw an extra one in my bin.
Thank you for answering that. You called Mr. Powell.
So what's council's pleasure on the rule, the regu- rules and regulations agenda?
I don't know, it feels like we're just worrying about something that's already there, so it's just better.
I just want to make sure that all council had observed that what this resolution is truly about, it is about the rules and regulations that I put in your packet and the opt in, opt out to give our commercial and industrial situation to consider.
Yeah, okay. Um, I'll make a motion, are we ready yet, Mayor?
If you're ready.
Sure. Uh, I move that, uh, we accept and adopt the following resolution, whereas the Perry City Council has adopted ordinance number 235, commonly known as the Perry City Code Section 1080 Yard Waste Collection, and whereas said ordinance provided that the city council shall be authorized to make rules and regulations necessary to carry up the intent of this ordinance. And therefore it is resolved that the rules and regulations currently established as set by this city council be amended and attached to these minutes and furthermore be effective October 1st, 2020.
One second.
Move by Katrel, seconded by Galvind, to accept and adopt the following resolution as just that. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote no. Motion carries. That will move us to possible approval of bids to rehabilitate well number one and three. John, did you have a report on this?
Yep. So these are sort of the air beliefs, uh, on the wells. Uh, well number three, that one, as far as I can tell, was, is the original one from 1983. What they do is beyond the check valve, so from the check valve back down into the well casing, when it drains back, it just lets it breathe so it doesn't get an air pocket and hammer when it pumps back up on the next cycle. Uh, same with well one, that one, I honestly do not know. Uh, there's no nameplate on it or anything, so that could be from the 1950s or 60s. Um, and I just think it's good preventative maintenance. I got several quotes, this was the one that Northern Pump and Well has done workforce in the past. I'm on the right one, right?
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, so to, to replace both of the check valves, uh, put, install the new parts to get them in there, uh, I'm asking for $2,242. I did put this in the capital improvements, uh, in the budget for this budget.
Just for clarification, the proposal says pumps one, our wells one and two, and our agenda says one and three?
It should be well one and three.
Yep, okay.
Uh, two has been abandoned back in nineteen, in 2008.
All right.
Uh, so Northern Pump and Well abandoned it. So on their records, they have all of our wells, so they, and I, I didn't catch it, I guess.
No problem, I just wanted to clarify.
But it is supposed to be one and three.
Okay.
You making this? Okay, I'll, uh, I'll make a motion.
I'm good.
Um, I move that we accept the bid by Northern Pump and Well for an amount not to exceed $2,242 for the rehabilitation of well number one and well number three.
Second.
We'd like to trial seconded by Elliott that we accept the bid, a Northern Pump and Well for an amount not to exceed 2242 for the rehabilitation of wells number one and three. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please vote aye.
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 All opposed, please vote no. Motion carries, unanimous. That will move us to possible approval of proposal to upgrade controls to water treatment plant and water tower. John, did you have a report you wanted to give on this?
Yes. So this is a proposal from DJE. They worked with Lane when the plant was installed, the iron removal plant was installed back in 2008, 2009. Uh, they were the ones that created all of the, uh, interfaces and everything. So I contacted them because I need some more flexibility in the levels and I can't, I don't know how to rewrite the programs, I don't have that access. And, uh, so I've come up with what I need to do. They know what I want to do, they'll probably, they're gonna send a guy up for a day to go over things with me, what we want to go back. This is just to give me tower level control so I don't have all of the wells kicking on at the same time going and bypass, uh, and getting out of the iron removal plant. Cause I can only run so much through the vessels at a time, um, especially during fire hydrant flushing. And it, it'll allow me to expand things a little bit when we get into the hotter months, to run the tower at different levels, uh, so I can keep colder water in there. And in turn, it'll, uh, improve the water quality in the system. So that's what this is all about. Uh, so base, for the basic scope of it is $3,200. If there's any snags or anything like that that they run into, there's some rates down at the bottom here for the PE and the technicians. Um, so I, I don't expect any overages. You know, if it went over my limit, then I, then I would come back to you guys and say, hey, we gotta do something different because things aren't working out. But I don't expect any surprises currently in it, so.
So I'll open the floor up for discussion, questions, and motions. That's council's pleasure.
Have they started doing the whining of the pumps or of the pipe? The cover?
Not yet.
Okay.
Um, everything's kind of kicked back, put, you know, pushed out. So I, I've got it, they're, they're working it in the schedule, I'll contact them before I leave, uh, tomorrow and hopefully we can get some time scheduled and I wouldn't, I wouldn't look for it till November, but I had to do it early enough to try to get.
In the schedule?
Yeah, because things are kind of crazy at times, so.
If it can improve our water quality, I'm good with it.
It's great to hear, but something, because I know some of the investments that they were looking at to improve water quality were much, much more than $3,200. So this would be, no pun intended, to drop in the bucket to improve our water quality.
I move that we accept the proposal by DJE Incorporated for a amount not to exceed $3,200 to upgrade controls to water treatment plant and water tower.
Okay, second.
Move by Katrel, seconded by, move by Elliott, seconded by Katrel, I flipped it around. I need to set the proposal by DJE, and for a mountain not to exceed $3,200, upgrade controls to water tower plant and water treatment plant and water tower. I just thought I could read that. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote no. Motion carries, unanimous. That'll move us to our final item of new business, possible approval of the Queen House repairs. Terry, you requested this for the agenda, so we recognize you.
Yeah, uh, I was overlooking the, uh, Queen House. And the foundation is really pretty rough shape, it has to have something done to it. And they've come to me and they've, they're coming to council to ask for the $11,000 to fix it. They've got the bid and if you look at the program, what they got here. Let me go to the glass box so I see what I'm doing here. You can see how much they spent, what they've done with their monies and they've outspent us by a great deal. But we've got to have something done with the foundation. I know we're gonna have to pinch somewhere to find the money, but I think we, we're gonna have to find it somewhere because otherwise we're gonna spend money for nothing if it goes down and collapses. I don't, it's not gonna do that. The, the place that, uh, the low bid on it, they do a lot of the historical stuff and they're really interested and they give us a good bid. But they love doing the historical stuff and they're used to going in there and getting that old dry cement, cracks and stuff out of there and then they inject it, pump cement back in. And it's as strong as ever, if not stronger when they get done. And they'll go all the way around it, inside and out. They'll build that right back up and make it, well, in our lifetime, we ain't gonna have to worry about it. Probably not in our kids' lifetime, maybe. But, yeah, uh, Adam wanted to talk on it a little bit, I think, didn't he, Phil?
I think he would, yes.
Yeah, so I think I'd like to wait. He be, we gotta get him here. Yeah, so I'd like to wait till next, uh, meeting and, and then see what he's got to say.
Okay, so let me ask a couple of quick questions. Since this paperwork just landed on my desk. Are, are, is the request for the approval of this bid for $9,800?
Yes.
Okay, and has John had an opportunity to review these bids?
No.
So can you put these in John's hands?
Yes.
Um, and if you're looking to push this to the next meeting, that gives John time. I, I don't know if this is just a quick thing for John to go, yeah, it's good, or if he's gonna have some questions, but he's our expert advisor on these kinds of things.
That'd work for both of us, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, is council, uh, is acceptable council to an objection to leaving this request? Is no action taken till the next meeting?
Good idea.
Would you maybe follow up with the treasurer on her budget and look for places to pinch, to find this money?
Out of her salary.
And you can get her to sign off on that.
Did you read that?
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be with her.
That's hard to tell.
That will come the next meeting, for mayor's sake. And this is how I propose we pinch the money. But if you're gonna take it out of her salary, I would suggest that you begin by donating your salary for the next year to pay for the party, if you want to get it out of the treasurer's.
I could do it, 40 years.
Okay, so I, I didn't hear any objection to leaving this to next meeting, so that'll give us a chance to do a little follow up. And that will conclude the new business for today. And that will take us to any other business that may come before council. This is our second opportunity for members of the public to address the council on any matter. Uh, Devon, do we have any public with us on Zoom?
We have one guest.
If the guest would like to be heard by council, would they please raise their hand on Zoom for the clerk and we'll hear from them. Having no public comment by Zoom, if anyone from the public present with us would like to be heard by council, let us know and we'll be glad to hear from you for your three minutes. Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, I'll ask council if they have any items of business that need to come before you for your action tonight. Seeing no items of business, that will move us to council discussion and observations. Councilwoman Miguel. Councilman Powell.
Um, I, I was wondering, I was told utilities own the trees. They do the tree trimming along the wires?
I don't think they claim to own them, but they have a way that allows them to trim them whether we like it or not.
Okay, how would one go about getting with them? Cause I bet you they're seriously committed to the wires lifting. I've trimmed what I could, but I'll get poked.
I'll call, and I would call Consumers Energy. Devon, do we have a specific phone number?
We had a gentleman that was coming in on that specific as they were going through Moore's Perry. They're, they're coming through, um, and cleaning out. Um, let me look through my folder and see if I still have that on record, because that was, um, oh gosh, March, April, he came in and talked to us, so.
But if she doesn't come up with a number, I'd call Consumers Power, their main line that shows up on your bill, and tell them what you need and ask them to get you the right person.
I appreciate that.
Councilman Wood?
No, I like this meeting better this way, but I don't know what the uptick and going on in Chiwa, or Chiwasi, yeah, so I'll be at the next one or do it virtual. But I didn't like being here.
I hope we've set it up in a way that gives you a high enough comfort level that you'll be here with us. I think it's so much more effective when we can talk to each other.
I like it better, it's just a lot better.
If you think of a suggestion that I can do to make this more effective, my goal is to get to a comfort level. my goal is to get to a comfort level where all the city council is satisfied to be. And if I got to tweak something, for example, I'd like to sit here at this desk and not wear this thing. But because of the feedback I've received from council and because I want to treat council like a adult, I wore this thing through the entire meeting in order to, to reach that goal, which is to give you guys comfort, but also that you'll be in there and feel safe. There's any small things we can do to tweak it and make you feel more comfortable here so that you keep coming with it. Can you just give me a call? Yeah, we'll do what we can to make this.
Thank you.
Work effectively and make sure that you feel safe and everybody else feels safe. Councilman Elliott? Thank you. I've said enough for tonight. So that ends council.
We got one in the van.
And we already went through that.
Public comment. Our items for the next agenda, we have discussion about becoming a second amendment sanctuary city, discussion of possible amendment to council rules, possible resolution to adopt water and sewer rates, uh, possible approval of McQueen House repairs. Are there any other items for the next agenda? Devon?
Uh, I was wondering if you wanted to do a pre-approved report from, um, Archgound.
Uh, yes, let's put them on there under pre-approved reports and presentations. That way council can engage and ask questions.
Okay.
That's for our professional reports. Other items for the next agenda? You have something?
Just another thing, City Hall is closed on Monday.
Why?
Public reminder, due to later day, City Hall is closed on Monday.
Right.
I hope everybody had a safe and happy holiday.
Mondays, it's a little.
Get a little rest from your legs. Any other items for the next agenda? All right. If anything comes to your attention between now and our next meeting, please communicate with the city clerk and we will endeavor to put on the agenda all items of business that need to come for council's attention at that time. The time is now eight thirty-two. We are adjourned.